There we go, what's going?
Okay, it looks like everybody's here, so we'll reconvene and call the meeting back to order. I'll start with reading a script. Due to current federal state emergency declarations Minnesota directive to residents to stay at home guidance about limited person-to-person contact due to COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting of the Lee Roy Ostrander School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota statutes. Thirteen D point zero two one meetings by telephone or other electronic means. Due to the health pandemic, the school board determined that it is not feasible for at least one board member superintendent. Our school district legal council to be physically present at the regular meeting location that it is not feasible. For the public to attend this meeting at the regular meeting location due to the health pandemic. I guess school board members, you know about the mute and raise your hands, so. And votes will be conducted by roll call, the meeting will be recorded. And access to the recording will be made available on the school districts website as soon as reasonably possible. With us is Becky Gertis and we welcome you. Good afternoon, Becky.
Good afternoon, everyone.
So we thank you for for becoming an interviewing with us for a school district superintendent. And we're interviewing three candidates today. And all candidates will be notified as soon as the school board has finished our deliberations after the you're the third interview, so I'll be we'll deliberate after that, so. I as board chair, I will be asking the questions and we will be taking notes to assist in our deliberations. And I would like you to understand that we are all listening. While we write and don't intend to disrespect if we're, you know, not looking down or whatever. So we've allocated one hour for the interview and our last question will be whether or not you have any questions for us. So you can use whatever time remains of the hour for the for the questions you have. So have you been given, did Gary give you a set of questions?
Yes, I have the questions. Thank you.
Yep. And Gary will notify us when we have thirty minutes remaining. And so if we if you have any technical issues, let us know and we'll figure out get through that, okay?
Sounds good.
So we'll start by introducing ourselves and I'll start. My name is Steve Kiesel, I'm the board chair. I've been on the school board for going on four years now. And so Cassidy, you go ahead.
Good evening, Becky. My name is Cassidy Milks. I'm a director and I've been on the school board for it'll be my second year this year.
Angie.
I'm Angie Olson. This is my fourth year.
Justin.
Good afternoon. My name is Justin Kennedy and I am also in my fourth year.
Teresa.
Hi Becky, I'm Teresa Frazier. I'm the school treasurer and this is my second year.
Patrick.
Hi Becky, I'm Patrick Arndorfer. I am the board clerk and this is my fourth year.
And Tim.
Good evening, Becky. I'm Tim Lewis and the vice chair. This will be my seventh.
Good evening, everyone.
And welcome and thanks again for joining us. So we'll start into questions now, right Gary? I believe so.
Yes, that's correct. I'm yeah.
Okay, thanks. So the first question Becky is is why are you interested in in a part-time position at Lee Roy Ostrander?
Well, I'll start first of all with I really truly believe in rural education. I grew up in a small community called Mountain Lake, Minnesota. My dad was a farmer and my mom was a nurse. And growing up in a rural educational environment where the school was really the hub of our community. Really taught me a lot about life. Teamwork, perseverance, collaboration. And it was through there that I went on to become a teacher. I had a high school teacher that really instilled in me the importance of education. But also he believed in each of us as students. And so that's really what got me into the field of education. And I've been in education now for twenty-two years. Of those twenty-two years, fifteen of those years, I've worked in administration as a principal. And I've worked in both rural and urban communities. And in the communities where I've worked, they've been in schools where we were designated to make improvement by the state of Minnesota. And it was working together, going back to those values that I learned growing up of working together as a team. Of persevering, of integrity. And we were able to make great improvements where we moved from a focus school to reward school. But it's truly through the collaboration. Then from the fifteen years that I've been in administration, I received my Director of Special Education licensure. And for four years I was working as creating a setting for program for students of special needs kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade. And since then, I've been working in the area of special education, but particularly expanding now into general education where I've been a specialist. Working in the schools focusing on curriculum and behavior. And so when concerns or issues arise. I'm sitting down and problem solving, really listening with compassion and helping families, teachers, staff, administration. Unpack the situation and put together some solutions where everyone has a voice.
Thank you. Next question. What are among the most important characteristics of an effective superintendent? And how do they relate to you and your past experience?
One of the key things for me is integrity. And when I say integrity, it's where your actions align with your words. And so if you're sharing with the staff. A new plan of action, or if there's a new mandate that you're needing to follow by the state. That you're walking alongside of them and your actions of what's expected, you're also modeling and you're leading by example. I also feel it's important to create a safe environment for working. Where you can take risks and challenges. As we found with COVID-19 with our distance learning, that's sometimes the best way to excel is by stepping out and trying it. And then taking feedback that you get and revising the plan and modifying it. I also feel it's important to be accessible. And that's one thing I feel is really important in a rural community. Such as yours is to be accessible, to be visible and to be at the community events. To be having coffee or conversation with your mayor. To be bringing in legislatures into the school building to see the things that are happening. So they really have a good understanding what it is in rural education. I also feel too it's involving your staff in the decision-making. And so as a leader, you're leading the group, but you need to have the followers behind you. And so involving the staff, making sure you're finding ways to get their voice. And then you're welcoming and also embracing conflict. And when someone has a different opinion than what you have, you're looking at that as a way to grow. And to learn and to look at things from different perspectives. And then to take that information and put it in to the other information that you have to really make a well-rounded decision. So those are the qualities I think are really key in a leader in a superintendent.
Thank you. Next question. Describe your ability to build trust and collaboration within the school district. How would you build and maintain trust within the Lee Roy Ostrander school system and community?
So when I was serving as an elementary principal in Duluth, Minnesota. It was really an amazing experience. It was a brand new school. But it wasn't brand new in the students that were going to the school. They had taken two school buildings. And closed those buildings and built a new school. And so it was taking two separate communities in a sense and bringing them together as one community. And the communities that I was bringing together were very different in social economics. And with that created a challenge. And in order for us to be one school. We needed our families, parents, communities, sponsorships, partners to look at us as one school. And how I started developing trust was by really listening to the voice of both of the different communities. And putting our strategic plan together. And one of the strategies we used was called the World Cafe. And the whole purpose of this was to engage in dialogue. To get both of the separate communities thinking together as one. And when we had this World Cafe, there were four main questions that we were seeking answers to. And the first one was what do you want? Your children or the students coming to our school, what do you want them to gain from our school or from our district? To gain, that was our first one. And then our second one was focusing on what do you value currently about our school? What do you want it to look like in the future was our third one. And then our fourth one was how can families and our staff work together in partnership? So we can help the students and the staff reach their potential. And when people came to this World Cafe, we had it set up so that they were working in groups of five to six and they would rotate through these questions. And then them being able to see each other's responses to the questions and start to build the process of this is one school, this is our community, this is all of us working together. And for all and getting people involved with it and hearing their voices. It then led our group, our leadership team to develop our strategic plan. But was so key was that we had the feedback and voice from the parents, the communities coming together.
Thank you. Um, the next question. Describe your philosophy of effective delegation.
So I think when we look at delegation, it's important to look at people's strengths. And one of the things that I think is really key is when you find people that have certain strengths and want to continue to grow in those areas. And each staff member on a staff has a strength that they bring to the team. And so finding the strengths, when you're looking for someone to help assist with the world's best workforce report. Finding those staff that really like diving into the data and unpacking it. And then you might have another set of staff that really like taking the data and making look visually appearing to the people. And then you may have another group of staff that their strength is in the writing. And helping wordsmith it. So it's really a strong public document to share. And so really focusing on those strengths first. And then when you're delegating, you really put the trust in the group. You set your standards. So if it's the world's best workforce and you have subcommittee set up. And a team is looking for the data that's needed to put in that report. You provide what is needed, what tests need to be in the report, what data is needed. But then you really build that team and you really trust them to complete the process. And you check in with them through feedback loops to see how things are going. Continue to encourage, continue to coach as needed, but really build that empowerment and that capacity within them. Cause the goal as your superintendent is to really create capacity within your staff. And have them be part of this process together. And so I say that that would be key is the strengths. Then coaching and monitoring along the sideline, sometimes it's even like whispering in their ear, you can do this, you've got it. Being there to help facilitate when problems arise or questions arise. But really standing back and letting them know that they're capable of doing it and believing in them.
Thank you. Next question. How would you suggest establishing a reasonable balance between budgeting for the needed school district improvements? And maintaining the fiscal integrity of the school district?
So in buildings where I've worked, it's been really key for us to be involved in our budget. And even as a parent, my own kids, they attend Byron Public Schools. And so my husband and I are actively involved right now. They're working on a bond referendum. And so I'm an active member on that committee. And so when I look at, you know, where to start, it's really a lot of pre-planning, so having a plan in place. And with that, it's involving your key stakeholders. So if there's a subcommittee of the board that helps with the finance, administration. Also the business manager, really having ongoing conversation and preparing. And then how your budget really needs to be embedded in your strategic plan. The goals that the board has set up, the goals that the staff that are implementing in the building. The budget needs to align with your strategic plan. And then analyzing your current resources and your revenue and your expenditure. And one of the things that I was challenged with as a principal that really helped and when I was doing my superintendent internship in Dover Yoda was doing cost analysis and we called it a cost benefit analysis. But for instance, we would look at programs, we had a teacher mentoring program that was happening in Dover Yoda. And it was showing and analyzing this to see where the benefits of us investing financially and applying for grants of this teacher mentoring program. Were our benefits there? Were we seeing the value? So I think that's really key when you're looking into things is going down into layers and doing your cost benefit analysis, looking at staff analysis, how is your staff managing the workload? How is the organization set up structurally? Job satisfaction, bringing that piece in. And then from that piece, once you've done your analyzing, developing that strategic plan. And what does it look like in three years, four years, five years? And then talking about challenges that we face in public education. With our money coming from legislature and if we're, if we don't address those challenges at the forefront. We're always needing to adapt to them. So trying to be ahead of the game and thinking about challenges that can that we know may be happening and addressing those early on. And then the last thing is sustainability. Once you get a process in place, continuing that process. Modifying it as you need to, making adjustments to that three to five-year plan. But truly following that strategic plan and with the strategic plan comes that financial plan, that roadmap that you're using to follow to reach those goals.
Thank you. Um, next question. I lost track. I think we're on number nine. Is that correct? Describe ways you maintain staff and system accountability to the school board and community. How would you set up an accountability system for personnel?
So one thing that I believe in is as a superintendent. That the teaching and learning, those are the two most important reasons that we have schools, the teaching and learning. And so teacher evaluation is a way to honor that, what's happening in the classrooms. And as a superintendent, I believe what's happening in the classrooms is important. So I need to model that and lead by example by visiting the classrooms. By really ensuring that the teachers have professional development. That they're given opportunities for coaching, that they're given opportunities to learn. And I think it's really key to have a framework. Some schools will use a framework by Marzano, but it's a teacher framework. What are the expectations? What are we looking for example in classroom environment when someone walks into the classroom? What is it that we want to see with respect and rapport between the students to students, teachers to students? And a framework helps us all have that common language, but also also helps us move to that mastery. So we all know what we're aiming for to get to. And with that evaluation piece, I think it's important to have it be a growth piece, to have it be a reflective piece. Where you're having conversations on it throughout the year. It's not just a one-time observation and you're done, but you're continuing to grow conversations through your staff meetings. Through professional learning community meetings where teachers are gathering together to share ideas. But it's common practice of talking about what's happening. And so really having those conversations and setting the stage for that teacher, teaching and learning to be key. And as the superintendent, you set that stage in the conversations that you have when you visit the classrooms. In the conversations that you have with the students. When I was a building administrator, our staff actually developed a rubric and the rubric was developed by the staff. But we were implementing learning targets and the staff had done research. And they put together a list when someone comes into the classroom, this is what they would hope the person would see. And it was teacher evidence and then it was also student evidence because they believed it was important for students to be able to share what they were learning too. And that rubric helped guide our staff development. And so when I would go into classrooms and mark it down and we'd put it all together and we'd see, oh, this is an area that we need to approve upon. And then that's what would guide our staff development or our professional development.
Thank you. Um, next question. What is the role of the superintendent and the school board in developing community support for the schools?
This part is key. This is where as a school board and a superintendent, it is celebrating. It is making sure that the person in the role of the superintendent is sharing with you as a school board, all the great things that are happening. And then it's sharing that story in different mediums. Sharing it through social media, sharing it through the local newspaper. Sharing it through the Austin Daily Herald. Sharing it through the television networks in the area. But it's continuing to celebrate and have people see the strengths of the school that are happening. And I think in education, we need to do more of that. More of sharing with people what's happening within the classrooms and how students are connecting. And how they're expanding their learning. And the stories that students share. It's amazing when you ask them about their day, what they're learning. And how they're connecting with the curriculum and the standards. But continuing to keep those stories alive and not just with one person, but continuing to spread that. And even having a spot where at the school board meeting celebrations are happening. Where you're bringing in staff to share. But also too, when I was a principal in the Howard Lake Waverly Winston School District. Our goal was to really focus on the positives. And so it was us reaching out. And one of our positives was our superintendent every year had us look for staff within our building to nominate for the Minnesota Teacher of the Year. And that was a great call because all of our teachers were capable of it. But it was really letting them know that, that they're valued, that they're honored, that they're respected.
Thank you. Next question. What have you done to upgrade the educational programs in schools under your supervision? How have you evaluated the results?
So in working with the schools, one of the things and maybe as a school board, you've heard this often is that we have a lot of data that comes to us. And one of the things is when we get the data, we have MCA scores, usually our state assessments. And then we'll have some benchmarking that'll happen throughout the year. That data is helpful. But nothing is more helpful than the data that happens daily in the classroom. And so really working with staff and setting up, how are you going to assess your students on a daily basis? And it doesn't need to be a lengthy assessment, but are you checking in with them if they got it? They sort of got it or they didn't get it? Are you doing a quick write where they're writing down what the main part of that lesson was? Are you selecting one problem so that you can say, yep, this group got it, this group needs some reteaching, this group didn't get it? And that daily part of assessing your data and then using that information to form your instruction. That is what will help us move our continuum to make sure all of our students then are meeting the standards. But it's that daily connecting our data collection with what we're teaching and becoming reflective about it and using that to improve. And not to do it in isolation. To bring teachers together to be able to share that data and say, this is what I got from my students. And it's not what I was expecting. I was actually hoping my students' scores would be better. Do any of you have ideas on what I could do differently? And having that time set aside where teachers can exchange ideas. Because I truly believe in the building that they're working in, they have the ideas, they have solutions. But it's finding that time for them to gather together and sit down and exchange ideas. To create opportunities where if a teacher has a strategy that's really worked to let that teacher go into that classroom and model it for that teacher and that student. Or that other teacher to go into the classroom and watch that teacher teach it. But continuing to find ways for them to connect together. So that they believe it's not just my students in this classroom, but they're all of our students in the whole school community. And if I have something that can help you, let's exchange ideas rather than working in isolation.
Thank you. Next question. We are looking for a leader who has a record of involvement and visibility in both the school district and community. Provide us with examples of how you will be involved, visible, approachable and accessible in our district and the community.
So one thing I think is really important is that visibility piece. And when you talk about visibility, it's being in the classrooms, it's being out to greet the students when parents are dropping them off. It's being there at the end of the day. For the students and staff being available during those non-structured times. Which are like the recess, the lunchtime, being in the cafeteria, having those conversations. It's being involved at the community level and civic involvement. And maintaining those relationships takes time. And so really looking at how to maintain those relationships by being involved on a regular basis of joining different clubs, of having coffee with the mayor, of connecting with the city council. Of having legislatures be connected to the school. Really making those connections, but you have to be intentional about it. So scheduling that time. And that's going to be key when you're starting in a new position are those relationships. And that people know where you're going to be and how to approach you. And if it's even setting up coffee and conversation at local gathering places where they're listening sessions, where you come and you listen to thoughts, questions that people have. And then you always bring along that one great thing that you can share with them. Sometimes it's more two or three great things that you can share about what's happening in the school. And if possible, even bringing a teacher along or a student along that can help share that story. But finding those times to really have listening conversations in the community can really build. And from there, they can start to take their own shape of topics that people bring forward. Of things that they're interested in, so you know what to prepare for ahead of time. But first, just starting with a pretty open, where I'm here to listen, I'm here to hear about what you feel are the strengths, what are your ideas? The community and education, the school is definitely a vocal point of the community. And we need total community support in continuing to keep our school open.
Thank you. Next question. What experience do you have with strategic planning for a school district? And how would you use such a plan in leading our school district?
So the strategic plan work that So the strategic plan work that I've been involved with has started first with a needs assessment. And the needs assessment has involved. The staff. It's involved the community. It's involved students. We've usually done fifth grade and up for students, but there's different needs assessments that can be completed. And the needs assessment focuses on three key areas. That I've usually seen. The first is high student achievement. So it takes a look at how are we doing in the area of our curriculum and our standards. The next area of strategic planning focuses on safe and welcoming environment. How are we doing that our students feel when they come to school? Can they enter the building as their authentic self? Do they feel safe? Can they take risks? And then the third is efficient and effective operations. How are we doing overall with our financial budget, our strategic planning as relates to finances? How are we sitting? And getting that feedback from that needs assessment in those areas. And then once we have that, then that's one piece of data and we can bring in other pieces of data. We can bring in our state assessments. We can also look at. There's a student survey that's done about environment of the schools and bring in other pieces of data to look. But once we have multiple pieces of data that we're looking at, then really laser-like focusing in and developing our goal. What is going to be our SMART goal? And with that, you know, what are the specifics? How are we going to measure our goal? Is it obtainable? When do we want to have it completed? And is it realistic? And doing that in each of the areas so that we would have a goal under student achievement, a goal in safe and welcoming environment. A goal in efficient and effective operations. And then my job as the superintendent in those goals. Would be to continually work on systems in place within the school to show progress toward those goals. And then bringing a report to the board. To say, okay, we wanted a hundred percent of our students to be proficient in reading. By third grade and right now we're at fifty percent. And then doing those check marks every year. Okay, now we moved up a little bit or we moved down. And and why do we think that happened? You know, analyzing that and continuing to develop our priorities. But continuing to monitor and assess those plans of action off of the strategic plan. And the strategic plans that I've worked to have been built on your mission and your vision. And then along with that, because it revolves a lot of collaboration, is developing norms. What are going to be the norms that we're going to work with as a group so we can live and grow our strategic plan?
Thank you. The next question. What has been the most unpopular decision you have had to make? And how did you handle the reaction to this decision?
So while I was a principal in Duluth, Minnesota, we received compensatory funds for our school. And we had a number of students. In Duluth, there's a lot of hills. And so the students that were unable to get to school actually lived below the hill. And this new school that was built was built on top of the hill. And the families of the students that were unable to get to school, it wasn't that the students themselves didn't want to get to school. But many of their members of their family um, were either in treatment. Um, had worked double shifts and so the child was needing to get up on their own. And so we were also designated as we needed to make improvement. As a school and we looked at it, one of the things we keyed in on was our attendance. And unless the students were at school, it was really hard to make the gains in closing the gap. And so as a group, a leadership team, we brainstormed and brainstormed. And our school psychologist had an idea. Our school started at seven thirty and we had a regular bus route that went. And it picked up the majority of all of the students. But there were a group of students that were continually missing that seven thirty bus. And so it was looking at our compensatory funds. And using our compensatory funds for a second bus. To go and pick up the students along with our social worker, along with the psychologist, along with myself. We had a rotating system and we would go and pick up the students knocking on the doors of the students that. Um, had not made it to school, having them board the bus to get to school. So that they could be at school to have lunch, to get the material that they needed, to be there with their friends, socializing. And for that, we had to work through um, not being able to have one of our reading specialists part-time. Because that is what the cost of the bus was to pick up the students. Um, it was the cost of us um, checking in, having a person in our office staff check in to see who was there or not. And at first, um, people were upset about that reaction. But what we started doing was charting the data. And we charted the data by um, students just by number. And we had a long list of the students we were picking up. And which of the students we were picking up on a daily basis that wouldn't have been to school to get the material. To get the lunch if we wouldn't have had that compensatory bus going around to pick them up. And our whole goal was to eventually wean off that compensatory bus. And so it was actually showing the data on a regular basis and people. Um, coming alongside and believing in it. And then even having staff that were willing to sign up. To go on the bus during their prep times on their own, like we need these kids at school. This is a way for us to connect. Um, for the parents, when we are building those two communities and bringing them together. The parents seeing um, the support that the school is providing and how the parents believed. In the students' learning and wanted to create where there is sometimes inequity. To create more opportunities where equality was happening, where those students were. Finding ways to school where the others were closer to school and could walk. And. It was through that process where we kept persevering through the process until the. Staff was on board and was talking to the students and hearing the stories from the parents. Um, that it truly made a difference.
Thank you. Um, next question. Describe your vision of the ideal relationship between the school board and the superintendent. What have you done in your past assignments to help achieve that relationship?
So one of the key things that I think is really helpful. Is knowing expectations and working along with the school board to know. So for the school board, I really look at that as the key governance. And the superintendent as management. And having those conversations with the board about their vision of it. How do they see that following? So if I see like the school board as governance and they're helping, they're establishing goals, establishing priorities. They're assessing how we're doing with our priorities, how we're doing with our goals. Um, they're developing school board policy. And then my job as that superintendent is to develop plans. To develop systems to complete those goals, um, to complete those priorities that the board has established. To monitor that and to supervise those systems in place. To collect the data. And so I think it's having that conversation of how does that look? And how can we really form that strong? Understanding of the expectations of the board and of the superintendent. I think ongoing communication is key. So weekly communication. I'm in the school districts where I worked and where I was doing my superintendent internship. It was collecting information to keep the board informed of what was going on. So really giving them a picture of this is what happened in the week of the school. This is what was going on. Um, being able to answer questions and to be accessible to the board. So that if questions come up, they can contact you directly and that you can have dialogue about what's happening. And sometimes the dialogue is, you know, listening to family members that have a complaint. And understanding where they're coming from. Sometimes it's providing clarity. Sometimes it's putting together an action plan because it is something that needs to be addressed. And so having the board know and give you full confidence. That you'll be able to take that information they gave you and that you'll be able to problem solve with the staff. And you'll be able to come back to an answer with the board that they can then provide to the individuals that had questions. I think that is really key.
Thank you. Um, next question. How would you describe your understanding of school district finance? What financial issues have you addressed in your career?
So with school district finance, one of the biggest issues that I think schools ever since I was. In education for twenty-two years has always been the financial piece. And so it's really understanding the budget and working with staff. To really highlight things, to have them involved in it, not in the micromanaging of it. But one thing that I always um, had done as a building principal was I would look at our building budget. And I would pick the main items from our budget. So we had like compensatory funds. We were title schools, we had title funds. We had school supplies. Um, office supplies for the teacher's curriculum. And we also had copying expenses. And so each month I would share with our staff. Starting off at the beginning of the school year, this is how much money we have in these accounts. And then each month, giving them a highlight of just those big accounts. This is where we're at as of today. And then I had a little column. So this is how much percentage that we spent of our budget so far. And our budget needs to take us to the end of the year. And I found that to be really effective in them understanding the. Picture of how the building budgets come together. Also, I think it's imperative to like as a superintendent, you're always looking for opportunities to bring in revenue to your school. So you're looking at grant opportunities that are available. You're looking at really staying current, like in the debt service equalization that you have a good understanding because that's really key. In rural school districts or the egg to school credit. Um, that you're able to talk that so that when you are going for the bond referendum, you can explain. To the community about, wow, this egg to school credit, this really reduces taxes on the agricultural. Land and buildings for the school district bonds. And over time, like it's fifty-five percent now, but I think it's by twenty twenty-three, um, it's seventy percent. And so being able to have those conversations. Um, and even if you're not looking at that bond referendum, but knowing that information that you can bring out, um, is really key. Um, with the debt service equalization, like with rural schools, um, how that offers state aid. That's one thing that we're focusing on as a parent group um, in Byron, about, you know, ten percent. And it can help renovate your school buildings or new construction. Um, but being able to share those types of financial support that are available for rural school districts. And I think too, you know, really being an active member of the Minnesota Rural Education Association. Where you really are focusing in on the issues of rural education. Around the financial piece. And when you're meeting with the key legislators, showing those examples. Um, of how those, the formula and how you need to um, look at it differently than metro schools. And having those conversations. I think those are really um, key things to to really be involved in. And I think too, with um, the experience that I've had, I mean, serving in a title school. Really knowing how your funds can be used and really understanding UFRS. Um, the system and your budget codes. And understanding what supplies can be purchased under what codes and then too, like how your funds can help. Um, complement each other. So if you have title funds and you have compensatory funds and how you can build those together. To really build maybe your math or reading intervention programs to be stronger.
Thank you. Um, next question. How would you handle parent complaints about teacher performance?
So what I've found um, in the years that I've worked both as a teacher and as an administrator. The first thing that's so key in dealing with a parent complaint. Is first to listen. And really seek to understand. And understanding the person's feelings and their thoughts. And as you're listening. Finding out if this is something that they are wanting action with. Or sometimes it is clarity that they come to you and they have this concern. But the information isn't aligning with factual information. And so as the superintendent is providing clarity. And other times. If it's not clarity, it could be that there's an underlying situation that doesn't even relate to the teacher. But something that the parent is frustrated with. And it's through that listening that you can unpack the situation to really get to the root cause of it. And what is it that we need to really focus in on? And what is the parent really coming with? And so I think um, really by listening, you can decide if, you know, there is a plan. Of action that needs to be taken and the the parent is valid in this situation and you need to make, do a plan. Or if there's something underlying, that means um, that they is needing other to be addressed or clarity. Misinformation has happened and you need to clarify um, the correct facts.
Thank you. Um, next question. Tell us about a time when you had to tell a staff member that their performance was not meeting expectations.
So when this happens, I feel that it's really important to have been in the classroom. So let's say it's um, as a building administrator, I had a teacher that was constantly having students come to the clock, to the office. And so as I was observing this, um, before I even had a conversation with the teacher. It was going into the teacher's classroom and observing what was happening. And then not going in there just once, but going in there multiple times. So you could really um, have a feel for the environment. And then once I had those observations to meet with the teacher. And when you and the teacher come with the understanding that you as the superintendent are here for teaching and learning. And the teacher will often agree that they're there for teaching and learning. And that you're here to learn, to grow, to study together. To create the best learning environment for the students. And to build that as your background and for the teacher to see you as a person who is here to coach, to help, to guide. To provide ideas, to exchange ideas back and forth. Then that's when you really can start working through the situation. And then it's sharing the observations. You know, I was in your classroom multiple times. And when I was in there, the students didn't know what your routines or procedures were. So that's why they're up walking around. That's why some are sharpening the pencil. While you're trying to talk. Is that what you see on a regular basis? And then, you know, giving them that chance to say, yeah, you know, or I'm not seeing that. And then if they're not seeing it, continue to provide those examples and say. Let's talk a little bit more. What are ways do you think that you could change that environment then? So we are seeing routines happening. And let's see how that goes. Can you give that a try? You know, for a period of time and let's see what happens. And then providing that support, providing them with ideas on how they can incorporate routines into their classroom. What are some teachers that they might want to visit with that have really good routines in place? Video clips, um, books, staff development. And really have it come from them though, the idea of how they want to put those routines and procedures in place. And really make it as um, this, we need to have the routines and procedures in place. This is actually, you know, part of our framework of teaching. And so I think that would be the the key part that you'd want to focus in on and continuing to go back to that framework. Of teaching to have that in place of what you're working on for mastery. Um, technology has really been great because one of the things that has really come out with technology is this tool called the swivel. And it's where a teacher can videotape themselves teaching and the students don't know that they're. And it's where a teacher can videotape themselves teaching and the students don't know that they're. Videotaping, but the teacher has a microphone that they wear around and it has infrared and it connects with this round. Circular ball and it picks up where the teacher moves. And having the teacher sit down with the rubric or the framework that's used for teacher evaluation. And have them view it and give them self feedback and use that is really helpful. But continuing to focus in on how can we grow, where we're here, let's continue to move along this continuum and continue to grow together.
Thank you. Next question. During your first year as our superintendent, how might you go about determining the strengths? And weaknesses of our school district?
So I feel observation is really helpful to be out and about. One of the things that I think would be really helpful too is just to carry index cards with you. And so whenever you go someplace and you're talking to people and they have an idea. To be writing those ideas down about what you hear and then to collect them and to say, okay, these are really the strengths. That I'm hearing when I go about to the community, these are areas that we really need to focus in on. And I think it's through those informal conversations when you're out and about. Or when you're at an athletic event or a concert and someone shares with you. Something a really aha, like a really proud moment, I always want to jot that down and then if they're really. Sharing with me something that's great about a teacher, then I'll write a note to that teacher and say, you know, when I was at the band concert tonight. Johnny's parents really wanted me to thank you because you took extra time to help him with this math assignment and. He was so frustrated, but by you taking that extra time, it made all the difference in the world. And just that handwritten note and then sticking it in their mailbox. And then I keep it on my index cards and so I have those, you know, when I'm having those tough days too, about these are all the great things that are happening. And these are things we need to continue to celebrate. And then that pile of things that we need to improve on to keep that at our forefront and continue to work away at that pile of what we can do. To continually get better.
Thank you. And the last question. What question, questions do you have for us?
Well, I made it. So I was really interested, you know, with COVID nineteen, how is your district and your community, how are you dealing with this?
Well. Anybody can answer, I I I've probably been on long enough, I think. So.
Are you talking about us as a district? How do we think you think they're handling it or?
Yeah, as a district, how do?
I think it's pushed some people out of their comfort zones, but I do think they're all doing a really good job of. Learning new skills and finding new ways to teach things and it might not be ideal, I'm sure it's much easier to plan. Your class with your kids sitting right in front of you, but I I think they've done a good job of trying to keep the kids engaged and. Do the face to face through the chats and and be available for all those questions, I think they've done a good job transitioning.
Oh, that's great to hear.
Yeah, I guess I I would agree with Angie, I think the kids are, the kids are doing well, the staff have been doing well, everybody's taking everything in stride, but. There was a few few small hiccups along the way and it's all getting worked out and. And you're doing, you're doing the best you can with the unknown, so.
I think given in the small amount of time that they had to prepare, I think they did a fantastic job. I just see it all over the kids. I ask students all the time, hey, how do you like this? How, you know, what can we improve on and? It's they're like, hey, we're taking it day by day and it's it's something that we're all learning and and trying to improve on, so. I think they're doing a, given the circumstance, I think they're doing really good.
I would agree with what Cass said, I think there was a a pretty steep learning curve in a short time to get there. And you know, there's been some difficulties, but it it seems to me that the staff and the kids have been working through them fairly well.
That is great to hear, that perseverance. Another question that I had was for the new superintendent as a school board. What are the goals that you would lay out for that superintendent that you would want them to complete in that first year?
Anybody want to raise your hand if you want to speak and, okay, go ahead, Tim.
I guess, look at our long range plan, short range plan as well. I guess really look at everything as a whole, get input, as much input as you can, form form your own opinions and. And help us keep moving forward.
Yeah, I think creating standardized processes for. Like job descriptions, I think is a very high priority on our list to start and. To kind of piggyback with what Tim says, you know, getting a getting a budget in place, seeing what what we have to deal with and. How much we have to delegate in certain areas is what we're really fighting for right now.
Anybody else? I would like to add to Cassidy's talk about bringing processes to to our school. Job descriptions, I think we need more clarity on job descriptions and. And you know, what you do and what you don't do, this is this person's job and and that and. And as far as long range planning is, you know, we got some H back things that we need to deal with. And it'd be nice to get AC in the school at some point. And we have. An older part of the school, it's just two classrooms, but it's a wooden. Part and it's, you know, twenty-five, thirty years old, I believe. And we're, we really need to take a look at that too, so.
Very helpful. How would you describe the culture of your school?
Teresa, you look like you've got something.
There you go, now you can hear me. I think the culture's gotten better, we as a district have gone through, it's it's been a rough couple of years. The staff is, Aaron's doing a great job leading our staff, our staff are working great with our kids. So I think, I think every day it improves little by little.
That is great, just to celebrate each of those moments, each of those strides.
I I'd like to add something as well, I think, I know the the staff is being positive, I think just reinforcing that. I think with our superintendents, giving them that validation that they're doing a good job. That they're being recognized for for going the extra mile, I think is a necessity. That needs to be implemented. You know, I don't think it's, I think it's underestimated as far as, you know, the past couple of years, it really hasn't been recognized and. I think it it's something that we need to work on.
You know, it is so amazing when someone, when people are valued and affirmed and acknowledged. How far they'll go, that belief in themselves, you know, giving them that belief in themselves. And it's telling people that, I think particularly when they're working through this distance learning. To let them know, wow, what you're doing is so valued, we value it as your community, as I think that's key. Thank you for sharing that.
Anybody else have anything to add? Do you have any more questions for us, Becky?
I'm just trying to really get a feel for what you had shared. So in planning together as a board, do you need to have board retreats? Just to form relationships so you know each other's strengths. And weaknesses and how we function together as a team. How do you see that unfolding? What has been successful? What are things that the new superintendent, you'd like to see that person? Really provide to you as a board?
Anybody want to tackle that one? You know, I I would have to say I would be open to that, you know, we haven't done. I think we did do some here a couple of years ago, if I remember right, I don't know, Pat, can you remember? Tim, Angie, yeah, Justin, I think we did some of that, but we haven't done much in that.
Yeah, I think did one with MSBA, did we do, was that?
We did one with MSBA and then we hired a private person.
Yeah, we had plane come in, I think, for the one.
Yes, that's right, yep, yep.
We've we've done this twice in the last, within the last four years.
Yeah, that's right.
While I was doing my superintendent internship in Dover Yoda, the superintendent and I. We were looking at PSEO, so they had a number of students that were choosing to do the post-secondary option that were leaving the district. And we had gathered data, but it was really helpful during a board retreat because we had time to like really unpack it and look at. The information that was coming in and have questions, really look at it through different lenses. Each person on the board, you know, brings a different lens to look into, really do some brainstorming. Opportunities and solutions and in the end, that really helped us in our problem solving. And in our, and in the next steps, so it's just been interesting for some of those big topics that are sometimes hard to tackle. Those are all the questions that I have.
Okay, well, thank you, I I see we're about out of time, it's seven twenty-eight, so we've got our hour pretty much, so. And I I thank you for being with us today and. We'll be deliberating tonight and then I'm assuming Gary Lee will get back with you after our deliberations.
Yep, I'll be making the phone calls.
All right, well, it was a pleasure to meet each of you. Yes, be well.
Thanks, Becky.
So Gary, with that, I guess we'll just recess, is that right?
That is correct, just recess again. And if you can give me about fifteen to twenty minutes, so let's look at. Reconvening at seven fifty, so get on again about seven forty-five. And if I'm ready to go, then we'll get her going.
Motion to recess to, we'll call it seven fifty and we'll try and get back at seven forty-five. Back in by Teresa, Cassidy? Justin? Angie? Teresa? Pat?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion carry, we'll see you at seven fifty.